Welcome to the December 6th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Councilmember Eddie Smotherman has our prayer, and then after you get done with the prayer, I have an introduction, Mr. Smotherman.
Okay, sounds great. If you would, please parry with me. Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the city employees that we have that represent our city. We're blessed and we're thankful to have those that do their hard work and provide the wonderful service to our citizens. We're thankful for all the blessings that you give us. We're thankful for our health to be here tonight, and we're thankful that people were able to come out and see their government at work. We're blessed to have a wonderful city, and we just can't say thank you enough. As we continue into the night, I hope that we make decisions the way that you would like for us to, and in your name I pray, amen.
Amen. All right, I want to introduce several people here tonight. We have David Arthurton, who is with Troop 441 out of Christiana, and he is here working on his citizenship in the community merit. David, if you stand up, thank you for being here. All right. And tonight, leading our pledge of allegiance, we have two different groups. We have Troop 1938, they're out of Barfield. They're led by Ms. Courtney Martin, who also, her husband works in the Building Code Department as an inspector, so Chris is here with us, so Chris, thank you for what you do. We have Nola Martin, these are our juniors, they're working on their inside government badge. We have Nola Martin, Ally Coleman, Reagan Ballard, and Emily Blakeman. We also have our Brownies, who are celebrating, working on, are celebrating the community. We have Chloe Stokes, Anastasia Callen, and Braylon Potter. So if y'all will come to the podium and we'll, on your mark, do the pledge of allegiance. Come on up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
That's good, too. Thank you so much, ladies.
Had a good sound, too.
That's right.
That kind of needs an amen.
That's right. I do have one quick announcement, I don't want to wait to the end of the meeting to do this. Tonight is also a very special night because we've had, we have someone who is here that has worked here for 36 years. Tonight is Ms. Georgia Machado's last televised meeting. Georgia has ably worked for the city for 36 years, and Georgia, I want you to know how blessed that we are that you've been leading us, you've kept all of us in line, and we are especially thankful for what you've done and what you'll continue to do. We now have Mr. Tucker, our Rutherford County historian, who's going to give us our December history lesson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's probably the most energetic pledge of allegiance I've heard. Appreciate that. Today's December 6th, tomorrow is December 7th, the day of infamy that changed the world and had a direct impact on Rutherford County. Rutherford County and Murfreesboro, as a consequence of what commenced on December 7th, were treated to their third military invasion. We were invaded and occupied twice in the Civil War, but in 1941, June 1941, 800,000 U.S. Army personnel, including General Patton, the man most feared by the Germans, came through Rutherford County and the surrounding counties, engaging in war games and maneuvers in preparation for land invasions later in the war. It's interesting that someone in Washington, D.C. had decided that the terrain, the demographics, the population dispersion, and our fence rows were what they were anticipating when they made the land invasion in Europe, Western Europe. As a result, they scheduled the field training and the war games in this area. The population was generally advised of what was going on, but with very few statistics, specifics. It became immediately available, obvious though, to particularly some rural folks when, in the morning, they look out and their cow pasture is completely filled up with an army tent camp with their livestock wandering around amongst them. It's interesting that there were very few complaints. I think they recognized we were all in this together, and that they were prepared to put up with whatever was necessary. Actually, though, when I talk to people who remember it, there are a lot of humorous stories. The city northern boys that came down here, some of them were pretty naive and discovered for the first time, for example, that chickens could fly. They bombed out the bridge up in Walter Hill. They flew over the bridge and dropped paper bags full of flour as the drill there. The artillery commander and the dairy folks finally worked out a truce. No artillery practice during milking time tended to upset the cows. General Patton, driving through Rutherford County, was stopped and advised that he was dead. Seems the umpire for that particular part of the war game says, "You just drove over a landmine." General Patton expressed himself colorfully and went on his way. An entrepreneur, 12-year-old entrepreneurs were, maybe extortionist is a better name, were selling nickel candy bars for a dollar, or whatever they could get for them, to some of the personnel. One, the group learned that it was not a good idea to place the command tent for their group along the path between the farmhouse and the little house out in the back. They were described as war games, but they were deadly. We know that about 80 military personnel died during the course of the war games. 24 of them were killed in Rutherford County, mostly in airplane-related accidents, including an air collision over Walter Hill, which six or eight of them died in. Two civilians were killed in Rutherford County, a six-year-old boy and a nine-year-old girl were hit by the military vehicles. December 1943, 75 years ago today, the maneuvers were in their last few months. Civilians were being asked to submit damage claims. Rationing was at its most severe. No Christmas lights. Lighting for Christmas was prohibited. It was also a time, as the maneuvers concluded, for goodbyes. I know one home up on the boulevard made five bedrooms available and warm drinks for the wives, the fiancés, the girlfriends who came to say goodbye before their men left for the overseas. Probably many of them knew that this could be their last evening together. What did they have to look forward to in December 1943? On December 23rd, the Roosevelt Administration issued an advisory to the nation that because of military initiatives planned for 1944, including a land invasion of Western Europe, quote, "Allied casualties will amount into the hundreds of thousands," close quotes. Sometimes today, it seems like we focus on things to complain about or things that divide us, but you know, if we'd looked back as little as one lifetime, 75 years, I think we should recognize we're a very fortunate, blessed, and privileged generation of Americans. Have a happy holiday, see you next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tucker, I think we were all reminded of that yesterday and today, watching President Bush's funeral ceremony and seeing all of the military personnel, and then also seeing the sight of Bob Dole standing up, and just all of those things that went on, so definitely fitting.
My father was at Pearl Harbor, and definitely a special generation.
Amen. All right, we'll move into our consent agenda. Anything, any questions on the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second. All right, we have a motion, a second. Ms. Schreit.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance, I'm sorry, Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to the minutes of the November 1st, 2018, regular meeting. Any additions or relation to the minutes?
So move.
Second.
Motion, a second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move into old business. We'll look at rezoning approximately 11.1 acres along Susan Landon Drive and Cedarview Drive, and this is second reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion, a second. Ms. Schreit.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Ladies, y'all can go ahead, you don't have to, you don't have to wait. Thank y'all for coming. Thank you. All right, we'll amend the residential district for approximately 22.5 acres in the Bell Tower Apartments PRD, and this is second and final reading.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion, a second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll look at rezoning approximately .55 acres located along Brandy Circle. This is second and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion, a second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Zoning ordinance amendment pertaining to minimum distance between self-service storage facilities and street intersections, this is second and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion, a second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, you have budget amendment ordinance 18056, and this is first reading.
Mayor, this budget ordinance covers several changes. I'm not going to read the letter you had before you, but I will mention that we do have one new item added to the end of the letter, so I'm going to just cover the categories broadly, and if you have any questions, we'll be glad to try to help answer those. In administration, we have a budget amendment to add a development services division. This is something that is expected to be a reoccurring expense over the next few years. Additionally, we have, under other general government, there is a bill that we pay annually for the reappraisal, and we budgeted for that in fiscal year 2018, but we did not receive that bill in time to accrue it before the end of the year. So that money that was budgeted was not spent, and fund balance probably increased because of that expenditure not happening. So now we have it in this fiscal year, and it was not budgeted. So that, that will be a hit to fund balance this year, but it was not to last year. Additionally, the county's offered, now that they have a good way of tracking their expenses to budget, to bill us for that annually, so that we don't have a large bill every four years. Under fire, we have a grant that needed to be budgeted. There's salaries involved, and equipment, and benefits, so, and some additional operating costs, so that, that needs to be added because of a grant we received. Additionally, there was a grant we received where some work was done, and it turns out it will not be grant-eligible, so that is going to be, need to be moved from grant expense, we won't get revenue from that. And there's also, you have approved in the past a lucution alerting system for Station 4, and that's going to come out of the general fund, so there'll be a new expense for that. Under infrastructure, we have street expense for Northfield Extension and Warren Street. Part of those are being paid for from revenues from the sale of the land involved that's requiring for these streets to be built, or is next door to these streets, and these are topics that you've, you've had before you before. And the new item is, last year, we had a commitment to MTSU for a housing and services liaison for the homeless alliance of Rutherford County. That agreement actually covered a period of time that came into this fiscal year. It was not budgeted for the final 5,000 to meet the 12-month milestone. That is under the public health, education, and welfare category, so we need to add 5,000 in in order to pay for that. The net effect of these amendments will increase the use of fund balance by $1,189,890. And we have revised the exhibit to go along with this. I hadn't had any questions yet through this week, but if you have any, we'll be glad to try to answer them.
Any questions for Ms. Schreit?
If there's no questions, I move for approval.
Second. Motion, a second, Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move into resolutions. We have a change order for package, a change order package for Doug Young Public Training Facility. This is for fire and rescue chief.
Mayor members of council, this, some of the summary of change orders with the Doug Young Public Safety Training Facility, with the site work there. A contract was approved with Rosso LLC back in the spring to do the work on the site, which included the fencing, all the, all the site work, construction of a driving pad, curbs, gutters, the streets within the facility itself. Several change orders are there, and I'll kind of summarize them. I left a sheet on your, at your desk as far as the summary of amendments to that. Kind of fit into three categories. Pre-construction changes, which were involved, some of the sewer work that was put in the original contract. Murfreesboro Water Resources decided to perform some of that sewer work and leave in the existing line where it was at, instead of it relocating it like it was designed in the center. And so there were deductions as part of those change orders, that first phase of change orders, resulting in a deduction of $196,479.59 to the original contract. The second part of the change orders were quantity differentials, differences in the quantities that were part of the original contract. Part of this resulted from being in suitable soils when it was proof rolled, especially under the driving pad. Additional soils had to be removed, as well as some other debris that was on-site that was not able to be used as base. Those changes and other requirements from Murfreesboro Water Resources, as far as redoing some of the other things that fit into this category with the sewer changes, resulted in a net increase of $485,320.87. And the last category is change orders that we made to the contract, and there's an additional spreadsheet that will kind of list those, all of those changes in detail, but I wanted to summarize them for you tonight. But the, the, the part of the change orders, a good part of that was due to changes that we made both to the canine area. To make that a certifiable course for the canine area, we had to expand the fence a little bit to give them a little bit more room to make that where they can certify the dogs on that, that field area of that course, as well as doing some additional work to that site, putting irrigation system in to make the grass more sustainable there on that canine area of the site. We also had to change the gate at the front entrance, instead of a slide gate that would cover both sides of the entrance, because of the fire trucks and the length of the fire trucks, to get those apparatus off of Bridge Avenue to where they could access the gate control. We had to move the gate and kind of inset the gate into the facility. When we did that, it made it to where the slide control gate, the slide gate would not fit, and so we had to go with swing gates in that instance, and that's part of that change order that's related to that. On the, on the gate modifications, there were additional modifications made under change orders at the request of engineering. The storm drainage system at that facility that was designed and built in the 1950s was inadequate in how it was coming into the storm drainage system under Bridge Avenue, so it was requested from engineering as part of this project to go ahead and fix that and make it correct under Bridge Avenue, and so Rosso took on that work as part of that change order as well. The one change order that has not been completed, all of that work has been completed with the exception of the electrical, the finished electrical work at the site, basically hooking everything in, and we have changed or modified that due to not having a building on-site as of yet, and not being ready to start construction on a building yet. We've kind of modified the way that the electrical routing is, and that's part of that change order and hooking that in to where we would have the power for both the drill tower, all the lights at the facility, the gate, and irrigation system. I can answer any other questions, I just wanted to try to summarize it as best I could.
Do we have time when this is going to be operating and used?
Yeah, it is completely operational right now. We have to, once we get the electricity in there, it's going to be a whole lot more operational, which would be within the month, once this last change order is approved. It's completely operational as a practical training facility, and hopefully we'll get underway on some buildings in the next little bit.
We haven't started using it yet, though.
Yes, we have started using it.
Yeah, Tuesday afternoon, you guys were out there practicing and looked like they were getting, getting a lot of experience with the tower.
Yes, sir, we actually used it for, again, for Firehouse Expo, doing a lot of the live burn scenarios there for firefighters from all over the country back in October, and so we used it for that. Police departments continue to use it. Once we have the electronic gate control in, it'll make it a lot easier for the police officers to get in there to, to get their dogs in there with the canines into that training field area, as well as, we've used the driving pad a couple of times as well.
Do we have a dedication of this, or we're going to do one?
Yeah, we definitely plan to do one, we'll probably wait till it gets a little bit warmer weather in the spring and can have everybody over and kind of demonstrate all the uses that we can do at the facility.
Chief, have you had any concerns with the plantings and stuff that are around the property? I've noticed that some of the, what look like magnolias to me, appear to already be dead.
Yeah, Kane actually checked on that with Urban Environmental. He, they are going to come, they've already winterized the irrigation system as part of their contract, and they're going to do that plant replacement probably by the end of December. All of those are under warranty, and they're going to be replacing every one of those.
It's a good time of year to be replacements.
Yes.
Any questions for chief? Other questions?
No other questions or comments, move for approval.
Second.
All right, this is approval for Resolution 18R33. Ms. Schreit.
This is approving the change order package.
Correct, sorry.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We now have the reimbursement resolution for the Doug Young Training Public, or Public, Doug Young Public Safety Training Facility.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, a second. Ms. Schreit, they'll call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. That clears that. Right, Ms. Schreit? Okay. All right, we'll move to Resolution 18R07, NASPA Value Point Cooperative Purchasing Organization. Mr. Lilly.
City council has approved the use of Western State's Contracting Alliance, known as WISCA, for technical hardware and services purchasing in 2013. The WISCA Purchasing Cooperative has since been changed to the NASPO Value Point Purchasing Organization. This purchasing cooperative contains the servers and the computers that we use presently, along with a wider range of hardware and services. The IT department recommends approval of the NASPO Value Point Purchasing Organization as a purchasing cooperative option under the city's procurement code. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Lilly?
If not, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion, a second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We now have annexation progress reports. Mr. Anthony.
Thank you, and good evening. State law requires that annual progress reports be provided to the city council for each property annexed, annexed by the city until such time that all services are extended to the property. We've provided progress reports for 15 annexations, which were approved by the city council between September 6th, 2014, and September 16th, 2016. The city council should conduct a public hearing on these progress reports and then approve the reports on motion. Thank you.
All right. We'll now open a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak for or against these annexation progress reports, please come to the podium. All right, seeing them, we'll close the public hearing, we'll consider for approval these annexation progress reports.
So move.
Second.
Motion, a second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, we now have several annexation progress reports that we need to schedule for public hearing.
The Planning Department requests that you schedule a public hearing for these 12 annexation reports. These represent the period of February 3rd, 2017, through January 26th, 2018, and we recommend a hearing be scheduled on December 6th, 2018. No, that's not right.
All right, that's today.
Might as well.
Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
We recommend that you schedule this for your next meeting. Thank you.
What's, when would that be?
I think it's the 20th, I believe.
Okay. December 20th?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
And we already scheduled some public hearings for that.
We have some other progress reports that Mr. Cooper.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
All right, so the 20th, is that, Mr. Wade had the motion?
Second.
All right, Ms. Schreit, they'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Mr. Anthony, we appreciate the ambition.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Mr. Anthony, we appreciate the ambition. All right, you now have Waypoint Master Services Agreement. Mr. Lilly, you're back.
Waypoint Technical Engineering Services have been used for, for the city, by the city of Murfreesboro Information Technology Department for the past five years to assist in updating and maintaining our network infrastructure. They're currently, they're currently helping out with developing and creating a design, internal design for us to build a, an internal fiber network that will encompass connecting all of our buildings. What we're asking is for the approval to waive the formal bidding process and to use an NC, an NCPA Cooperative Purchasing Alliance procurement option to approve the master services agreement with Waypoint Services. We have used the NCPA Cooperative Purchasing Alliance in the past to procure other network services, but we're asking that we, we be able to use that for the procurement of the, of the master service agreement with Waypoint.
Any questions for Mr. Lilly?
Is this the fiber optic that we're looking at and connecting the ring around the city, or?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
This would be the internal design and the, and the hardware recommendations.
No other questions, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion to second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now look at City Hall Access Control System Purchase and Installation.
That's me again. Okay. The Information Technology Department, along with the Facilities Department, has been tasked by city management to look for an access, access control solution that will enhance the security of employees, buildings, and assets. This access control system will also prevent unauthorized access into restricted and employee-only areas, which can pose a threat to the public and personnel safety. An invitation to bid was advertised and sealed bids were submitted by Systems Integrations and ADS Security. The lowest responsible, responsive bid for the purchase and installation of access control was submitted by ADS Security. It is the recommendation of the Information Technology and Facilities Departments that the council approved ADS's bid of $52,779.86 for the purchase and installation of an access control system at City Hall. The cost has been budgeted as part of the City Hall renovation project.
That was a pretty close, two pretty close bids.
It was, it was pretty close, yes.
Any questions?
This is mainly helping with employees' security, right?
That's correct.
No other questions, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion to second. Ms. Schreit.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We now have a stop-loss invitation to bid and contract recommendation from Human Resources.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members. As you know, stop-loss insurance provides coverage above certain amounts for the loss of related employee health insurance. It's being recommended the city council approve the stop-loss insurance proposal submitted by Blue Rea of Tennessee and authorize the city manager to approve the contract, which would be effective January 1, 2019. The city's current contract is held with Blue Rea of Tennessee, and it expires December 31st, 2018. An invitation to bid was sent out on October 23rd, 2018. The city received one bid, which was Blue Rea of Tennessee. The bidder was determined to be responsive and responsible. Blue Rea of Tennessee proposed three options of coverage based on a review of the options and a recommendation from the city benefit consultants, Hub International. The city recommends stop-loss coverage with an individual specific deductible of $150,000 and a $200,000 aggregating specific deductible. Should be noted that the city's current option is the same for 2018. The proposal includes no contingencies, no lasers, and a 45% rate cap maximum increase at renewal. The cost of coverage is dependent upon covered lives with an estimated annual premium of This represents approximately 7% increase for 2019. Your approval for the proposal for stop-loss insurance is requested this evening, along with authorizing the city manager to approve the contract with an effective date of January 1, 2019. Thanks, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Ms. Russell?
This is more like a city liability coverage. For example, if we have a tremendous claim, dollar-wise, this coverage will kick in and really keep the city from going bankrupt, right?
Exactly.
No other questions, I move for approval.